Oh, full crew now.
Look at that.
It's 3:07, right? We're not late, are we?
No, it was 6:30.
She just 6:54'd us, so you're good.
Hi.
Hi.
Change sides.
Hey, we gotta mix it up sometimes.
Well, sometimes you have to change sides.
Become a jack of it.
Okay, I know. Carolyn put my name here, or somebody did, so I sat here tonight. Sit over there.
That's the value of not having a name tag.
I know, you can sit wherever you want. You can go rogue. You can do what you want.
That's his.
Oh, no, I have a name tag.
Oh. Okay, we can just go.
There he goes.
Outside.
Oh, look at this.
She's a rat, forget it. Sorry, it's a better cat.
Well, good evening, everyone. Now, just about 7:00. We're gonna open up the public hearing for the North Hampton planning. Today's planning board, every planning board usually starts with a public comment period for people who wanna speak to some item or issue that's not on the agenda. If you do wanna speak to something on the agenda, we'll certainly take that when those items open up. So if you have any public comments, please come up.
(inaudible) in accordance with the then ordinance, we requested a buffer at the 2016 site plan hearing, but were told there was no need to buffer the well-kept grounds of the former Clark School. Though not on the plan, check writer South Side has subsequently become the repository for multiple HVAC units to include a large noise compressor and an enormous and very loud generator scheduled to run for an hour each month. The parking area remains, though now fronted by neon-yellow concrete barriers and pickleball courts, open to the West Side's employees and tenants, and perhaps to those in the East, will soon join this motley, unattractive, and noisy collection. Given the typical size of the development's new plantings, the promise of surrounding shrubbery rings fairly hollow. Yes, we recognize that a developer's plans can change as work progresses. However, the view from our northeast window, door, and yard is no longer of well-kept grounds. We need relief, and relief in such bait-and-switch situations should be city policy. At a historical commission meeting prior to the site plan hearing, I asked Mr. Douglas about a buffer. He shook his head, uttered a drawn-out "No," but added that extending the fence would be possible. I responded that more fencing might violate historic district standards. My error. Since then, no more has been said. However, the existing fence was shortened after a dramatic 2018 gas line rupture, thus enlarging our view of the development's utilitarian south. Since moving to Round Hill, we have planted approximately, a total of 25 arborvitae, fir trees, and rhododendrons along our northern property line, thus shielding our view of the old Clark generator and more. Last tenant's plantings continue to the street, but several trees are stunted by the developers' dying hemlock and black birch that overhang our property. Given the extensive rendition of the developers' plans, at this point, we need visual and oral relief. Extending the existing fence eastward to the large lamp hall would be helpful. Though I'm hardly a fan, a row of tall, robust arborvitae would be both more effective and aesthetically pleasing. Though it shouldn't be necessary, we are willing to contribute to their purchase. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment at this time about any other items? So Carolyn, do we have any steps to be taken with the developer upon? I thought, if I remember this hearing correctly, there were gonna be plantings along the south side of that pickleball court.
Yeah.
And the utilities.
Yep.
So they just haven't happened yet, or?
Right, 'cause the permit was issued, I think, in the early fall.
Right.
And then, so they weren't planning to do it till, I think, springtime.
Okay.
So that all won't, the landscaping won't be completed until then.
Okay. So that's part of it, Mrs. Gross.
I understand that. I still think a maybe eight or 10 arborvitae, whenever it is up from us, we are down, we see the whole, everything, would be extremely helpful.
Okay.
And as I said, we are willing to contribute to the cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, if there's no one else who wants to make a public comment, we'll open up our discussion. So the first one, we'll take, is a discussion of committee assignments and the chair and the vice chair. Carolyn sent around a little flyer about the committee assignments. You can't put that up for us, could you?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, send it up.
I left mine out.
Yes, I can put that on the screen. Let's just see. Sorry. I thought I had it open here, but let me grab it. Oh, I have my mouse. That's what that's for.
Anyone currently have a committee assignment?
No.
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 Okay.
You and Too Early.
I'm new here.
Your tenure, right. You're new here. So I'm serving on the CPC as the planning board rep. I think that's about the only one. I guess the people who left Mark and Tess had assignments to...
Zoom this in.
Yep.
Wow, okay. So we've also had some changes. So there have been some changes to the committees and committee structures. So the list I sent you is, some of it was, had already been deleted. There's one on, we can start at the top. So the first committee is capital improvements, which is not meeting now. It's really to develop the capital, to help develop a capital program for the city each year. So that, they start meeting in September, and it's a citywide thing. It's not just planning projects, but you're sitting on a committee that's representative of the city and of different sort of interests for funding for the city. Mark Sullivan had sat on that committee for a long time, so that spot is vacant. And...
If I might, I served on that for a while, and it's a series of meetings as the budget's being developed, and so department chairs, department directors come in and present their pitch for whatever capital improvements they might want.
Right.
And you can have a back-and-forth with them, and then the committee kind of goes through their budgetary requests and kind of debates on them, and then recommends things to the mayor, I believe.
Yep, that's right.
Does that mean that it needs once a week between September and November? Is that what that notation means?
Yes. So, and I think it, I'm not sure how consistent that is from year to year, and I think they start out, it's more spread out, and then as sort of things get refined. So there's typically a series of meetings with departments to hear from each department what their capital needs are. So as it gets sort of into the heat of it, they're definitely more regular. Sometimes they're a couple times a week. But then, you know, it's finished by November. Yeah. So should I run through these, and then we can then go through and discuss? Okay. So then, we also have a technical review that happens for projects that are in the pipeline, in development. So we offer a sit-down with any applicant that's gotta come for public hearing to either Planning Board, or Zoning Board, or Conservation Commission. Usually, it's the bigger projects that are coming to Planning Board. And we sit down, and "we" meaning our office, and I direct the committee that is, has a staff person from the Department of Public Works, the Building Department, the Housing Planner, usually if it involves housing, Conservation Commission Planner, Economic Development Coordinator from the mayor's office, and one Planning Board member, and if necessary, a Zoning Board member, depending on the nature of the project, or if necessary, a member from the Central Business Architecture Committee. So it just depends on the project where it's located.
The Fire Department, do they come?
Yes, and the Fire Chief or Deputy Fire Chief usually comes. And actually, a couple people from Department of Public Works relate to stormwater and then other utilities. So the idea is that the staff sits down with a member of the boards to take a look at the proposed concept plan and give feedback to the applicant. Projects don't always come to fruition after that, but it's a way to make sure that the applicant is on target with making sure they're hitting all the requirements in all the different areas and codes of the city. And so it helps to ensure sort of fewer delays when it comes to public hearing, and that the application is ready once it's submitted. I mean, it's not always a guarantee, but that's part of our process to make sure that the public doesn't have to come to multiple meetings, and the board doesn't have to hear, you know, go to, have multiple public hearings because an applicant's not ready. So that's what that is. It meets as needed, but the third, right now, we're on a schedule of the third Tuesday, and it's sort of before typical business hours, so we only look at maximum of two projects per meeting, or as necessary. Sometimes there's only one to review, and we give the, it's basically a maximum of 30 minutes per project. So we start at 7:30 if there are two. 7:30 to 8:00 is the first one, 8:00 to 8:30 is the second one, done by 8:30 in the morning. If we only have one, I either do it at 7:30 or start it at 8:00 for that one. So we've...
Both of those committees are a great way to meet people around the city.
Yeah.
If that interests you, you know, to kind of network with people in other departments and...
And typically, so that we don't have a problem with any kind of quorum, only one person, only one board member can come, but we wanna make sure there's a backup, 'cause not everybody can make every single 7:30 or 8:00 a.m. meeting. So it's good to have two people lined up for that. Formally, we had a, we had someone representing, as a representative on the Transportation, Parking and Transportation Committee, but because of the administrative reorganization of that committee within the city that the mayor has finished sort of doing, we're not gonna have a member of the Planning Board sitting on that committee anymore. The Wayne, or as the Director of the Planning Office, would sit on that committee. So that, that's why that's a strike-through there. And that also included the Bicycle Pedestrian Subcommittee. We also have...
And Alan was ceremoniously dumped from that committee?
I feel awful.
It was ceremonious.
There was a ceremony, okay. All right.
Yes.
Trying to cope with it.
Oh, Alan, get fun on that committee.
So then, the next one is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So typically, it's the chair of the Planning Board has been sitting on that, but it also has varied, depending on whose interest there is. And unfortunately, they tend to meet on the same meeting nights as Planning Board, so it can be difficult to straddle both of those. I think, obviously, Tess was most recently the representative. I know Deb and Bruce sat on it for a while, and she would sort of try to figure out which meetings made sense to go to, you know, Planning Board or PVC. Sometimes it starts earlier in the evening, so you can get back from PVPC. Sometimes the meetings in North Hampton are Holyoke, so it's not going all the way to Springfield. So there's that. And it's really just to sort of participate in that regional conversation. I think, George, you sat on that too, right?
Yeah, for quite a few years.
So...
I'm around.
It is, it wasn't a really interesting committee, 'cause you get to hear about the regional things, you get to hear about the tip, the transportation priority projects that are happening. You get to meet a lot of other planning kind of personnel from the other cities in Pioneer Valley, which is great, too.
And I think, I mean, the key, of course, is understanding that, and particularly as it relates to transportation funding, or other state funds that can be used for infrastructure. Right now, we have a lot of projects in North Hampton that are, you know, backing up, getting ready to go for the, over the next year, year and a half. So it's not just the Exit 19 project, but there's the Hatfield-North King Street roundabout, there's the King and Finn Street Signal, State and Finn Signal that offer rent at Edward Square, and changes to the intersection of North Street and King. So there are a lot of transportation, and then, of course, Main Street is, you know, very early in that tip process, but that's one of the projects that will go through the tip. So participating in that conversation and understanding sort of where we are in North Hampton in terms of planning for those, strategically for those transportation improvements, and being able to advocate for those to the region to say, yes, you know, we're ready to go, because those are the projects that get funded. So it's definitely an important, you know, position. And then, we have the Community Preservation Committee, which, George, you...
Currently, and then, our buddy over there was on it for quite, how many years? Did you serve on it?
I was elected, so it was four years.
Four years, yeah.
I don't know if you're staying on or not.
No, so that's what I'd like to talk about.
So if you're not staying on, I will say it's a fantastic committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether, either way, I didn't wanna get people's hopes up if you were planning today.
Yeah, no, I think it's open. I've served on the CPC, you know, in its early iterations, too. I really had a chance to do it. And it is a fantastic committee. Nobody comes in and complains about anything at all.
It's the opposite of nimbyism. It's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
And the other thing I would say is that you have, because it's composed of people from all, a bunch of different committees, you have a lot of expertise from all different realms of the city. It's pretty amazing.
And it's not, I mean, this says first and third Wednesday of the month, but that's not regular or consistent. It depends on the funding rounds. So there's a break in between funding rounds, so when there's not a funding round, then you're not meeting at all.
It's September to December, and then like January to, or February to May-ish.
Yeah.
Yeah, summer's off.
Yeah. So the other thing I wanted to bring up is that it's not on this list, is we used to have a representative on the Housing Partnership. And we decided, I think Alan, you were the most recent rep to the Housing Partnership, decided that maybe it wasn't the best way to have communication go back and forth between the Planning Board and Planning Office and the Housing Partnership. So we stopped, we started having internal discussions more with staff between the Community Development Office and our office. Now, we've just merged those two departments back into the Planning Office, so we're doing community development as well, which includes housing. So we're gonna be staffing internally from our office, we're gonna be staffing the Housing Partnership again. So we're still trying to figure out what might make sense, and it might mean that it just is sort of stat, like internal conversations between the staff person who will be staffing the Housing Partnership, and then me, right now, is the Planning Board staff person. But I'll keep you posted on that as we work through that.
So I would put a plug into participation. I served on that one for a couple of years, too, when I first started. I had a lot of energy back then. And I learned a ton about affordable housing, and because that's such a big issue for our city.
Yeah.
I think it's really good to have somebody on the Planning Board who's, you know, understands those conversations, who hears that. Certainly, we get a lot from you, Carolyn. I'm not in this in that, but I think it's, for anybody who's interested in that issue, it's really some great conversations that happen there. And I know this woman, Paige Keller, who's resigning, certainly helped to drive those conversations and was a role in this.
And the other thing I'll say about that is we're trying to sort of rework with the Housing Partnership to figure out what makes sense for their role, even in participating with the Planning Board on issues, so that it's not, they're not a separate sort of advocacy group working in their own silo, but that, you know, we're trying to figure out the best way to integrate those advocacy efforts into the Planning Board's work, and also, you know, public forums on housing and things like that. So that's what the next couple of months will be about, sort of on the administrative side, is figuring out that role. So we'll keep you posted about that. And I just put, then at the bottom of this, I just put just sort of an update of other planning projects, because I think the last time we reviewed committees, and we're talking about laying out sort of the planning, long-range planning projects that we were gonna be embarking on over the next two years or so, I didn't even put the municipal vulnerability and work on here, but I think at that time, the board had voted to try to set aside meetings during the year to focus on those, as opposed to creating a subcommittee that just focuses on those long-range planning projects. So, I mean, you know, to nice an example, we'll talk a little bit later about where we are on the two-family housing by rate. So similar to that, sort of analogous to that, is sort of how we might treat these other planning projects, and sort of have, you know, one meeting dedicated every other month or something to those bigger planning projects. So if you wanna continue to do that, as opposed to have a subcommittee, that's absolutely fine, but I just put those up there, just so we sort of revisit that conversation. And so that's it.
So how do we wanna move forward on committee assignments? Ask for self-nominations? People who are interested in serving, who feel like they have the extra time to go to these meetings? The CPC is twice a month, so there is a little bit of extra work there.
Mm-hmm.
That's for sure. The PVPC...
Didn't you say that was not all year long?
Right. It's, so basically, September to December, and funding available, then this, you know, the next round would be early spring through May, like maybe February or so through May.
I think they're having their first meeting next week for this round.
But it's a very light round, so...
It's the same number of meetings, that matters how much money you have to give out.
Yeah.
There's generally about, I think it's like seven or eight meetings in the round. You sort of, you get applications. There's small grants, which are under like $2,000, which you can, which, I mean, North Hampton's come up with their own rules on how to allocate CPC money, or CPA funds. So you got, you get applications, which are pre-vetted by Sarah, who's a staff member. So they're all like legal.
Sarah LaValle?
Sarah LaValle, yeah. So basically, you don't see applications that are not, that it would be illegal to give CPA funding to.
Right, they haven't been vetted before, you know, previously.
Yeah, there's a pre-vetting process. And then you write questions for the applicant, and then they come in and present and answer questions, and then there's a, there's usually one or two, depending on how many applications, there's one or two meetings where the public comes and comments, and that's where you get this sort of kumbaya sessions. I think in my experience, there was only one time when somebody came and spoke against an application, and it was actually the, in a sense, it was the applicants coming and speaking against their own application. It was interesting, but...
Oh, never mind.
Yeah, kind of, yeah. They hadn't vetted it with their members first, kind of. And then there's some discussion, but I would really stress the high level of the discussion in that group is, I mean, just really thoughtful and informed. So it's five or six, seven meetings, depending on the year. But a lot...
I'd give that a... Do that.
Okay. Anyone else that wants, we could...
I would like to, because I left the CPC, 'cause my time is pretty tight. When you say that the PVPC meetings may also be the same time as this.
Yeah.
That's appealing to me, actually.
Okay.
A way to get more involved and maybe not actually allocate any more of my time.
I see, I see.
That's not the only reason. I find the...
Yep. Anyone else would like to throw their hat in the ring for either of those positions? We could have a voting runoff if it doesn't. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much. So that's two out of four, the CPC and the PVPC.
Just to clarify, though, these current planning projects are not covered by these committees. These are TVD how they will be covered.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so I put them there just to check in, to see if you still wanna move forward on doing sort of a committee of the whole discussion of these versus having a specific subcommittee to work.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really interesting. It's where we can actually do planning, as opposed to just kind of permitting kind of reviews. It's really a, nice to be able to look down the road towards things, too, and help shape some of the plans in the city. So anybody interested in this Monday morning technical review?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Only it could be earlier.
And I have to say, it's definitely as permits come, as applications come forward, so it's not necessarily even once a month. I don't think we've had one for a couple of months now. So that's also an irregular one. But what happens is, I notify whoever's on the list. It's a week ahead of time that I notify people, so...
I work 7:00 to 4:00, so some of this stuff's off the table.
Yeah, okay.
I'm working retail, they're not exactly very flexible.
So I'm happy to do that, unless someone else wants to step forward, and maybe Sam could be our alternate.
I'm out there.
Sam could be our alternate, who's not here tonight. But I know he has young children at home, too, and has the construction sites, I think, open up pretty early for him.
So the capital improvements thing, if I volunteer for it now, there's nothing until September?
Right.
It seems magnanimous.
Quit in September.
Yeah, I'm out.
Aren't you moving to Arizona in August?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. I would do that. I'll let George come tell my wife.
Yeah, okay.
Just so, just for my own edification, so this makes a recommendation to the mayor, and then in the budget, there's always like this long list of priority projects. How different is that from what gets recommended, or is it usually just passing through, or...
Well, it depends. So the capital plan is a five-year plan, so some things might get pushed to year two, and then you come back. But, you know, the mayor takes the recommendations, you know, seriously.
Right. It's a little bit like the CPC, and sometimes there's a lot of talk about bonding things, really big items, and, you know, move forward that. And I think the, who's the CEO, the CFO of the city?
Susan Wright.
Susan, so she kind of facilitates the meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and then she provides sort of what the funding mechanisms could be for, you know, each one of those, or how, you know, what pots of money can be allocated for...
I would say, as far as the, like, the long-range plan, if we wanna circle back to after this conversation, I mean, that's the kind of...
to after this conversation, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I hope to be able to talk about as part of this. And, I mean, if it can be baked into the agenda so that we all get to participate, I mean, that seems more, without dedicating additional time. Because the other thing it seems like to me is like you have a subcommittee and you talk about it and we're still going to have to bring it back here for a larger discussion anyway, so...
Right. Yeah, and that's totally, I mean, that works for us, sort of, staff level, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that still is something that is of interest to everyone.
So, ideally, we go through a period of time where there's a lightning of the permits.
Right.
And we can have one permit on Thursday night and then half of the meeting can be on one of these plans.
Right. Yep. All right, thank you.
Okey-dokey. And if the conversation around the Housing Partnership comes up again and there's, it would be great to bring that back here and talk about it a little bit if there is a place for a board member to... Because that, I think, is a meeting just once a month, Housing Partnership, or maybe twice?
No, once a week.
Once a month, yeah.
In all honesty, the Housing Partnership, Peg had a really hard time every month coming up with an agenda. I mean, it seemed like there was nothing to do. That's my opinion. She just couldn't think of things to put on the agenda.
I mean, now, I mean, you saw in the paper this week that the PVPC just sort of finished its housing, you know, needs assessment essentially for the city. And so, there's a lot of recommendations spelled out in that. So, there's a lot of work that the partnership did over the last, I don't know, six months to a year with PVPC on that. And now, I think there are a number of recommendations within that that I think they're going to be interested in gearing up to try to figure out a means to address those or help facilitate, you know, ways that the city can achieve some of those objectives.
Was that report, the HUD required report?
Um...
Because on CPC, a couple of years, I remember being sort of right after the election, it came up, the funding for this HUD required report to get, I think it was to get CBD funds and pay for it.
Yeah, so we, so there is a, well, there's an annual and then five-year plan also for housing. This is a little bit, but this feeds into that because it's sort of, it's an, oh, it's sort of taking a step back and looking at the needs of the city in particular and then helps shape those plant, the HUD required planning process.
Yeah, on your right in that, this partnership doesn't have any kind of decision-making gusto, you know, as opposed to Controvese Commission, even in his law commission. So, they're really, it's a different kind of advocacy.
I would say, though, I mean, I don't know if anyone saw on the news about what happened in Amherst, maybe it was a week ago, where they put an RFP out for a school to do affordable housing. And I think Valley CDC put forward a plan and they just said no. I mean, I think that kind of intangible coordination between people on the money side, on the planning side, on the housing side is sort of, it's hard to exactly know where the fruits of it are, but it shows up when you don't have projects just like die.
Right.
Which I think North Hampton has a, you know, I think that communication is really useful. But I think it's true, it's hard to understand exactly what you're doing in a committee like that.
Okay.
So, now, before we move into two-family based, form-based code, we want to think about a chair and a vice chair moving forward. And, you know, I, when Mark and Tess left, I kind of stepped into this role. There wasn't a lot of Machiavellian back room cigar smoke kind of manipulation. It was just because I had a bunch of experience from 10 years ago. So, I was welcome to do it for a while, but it doesn't mean I need to do it going forward. Just want to kind of say that upfront. So, how do we want to open this up? What's been the tradition of having chairs and vice chairs?
I mean, typically, I don't recall it ever being in the back room, but...
Has it always been, I'm waiting for the Machiavellian.
The good part.
Action, yeah. Where is the back room?
I think, you know, if people have an inkling to, an interest to do either one of those, they've typically come forward. I'll tell you that, you know, the official way to do it is to have someone nominate that person once it's clear who has an interest to do that. And then we do a roll call vote. I, for people who haven't been in the position before, I am certainly available to provide, you know, staff, technical assistance ahead of the meeting. So, don't feel like any of you would be thrown into sort of the wild without any support about, for this and for each project, so...
And what are the responsibilities besides running the meetings? Like, what else is involved?
Typically, that's the biggest function is running the meetings, making sure that, you know, proper voting procedures are followed. There may be times where the board says there might be a condition where the applicant has to come in and review something with the chair and staff or something like that. So, on occasion, there might be other opportunities for the chair to, to conduct business outside of the meeting. You know, you're the point person for the board, so you might get called from, by the press to answer or respond to something, but...
And you just like, call Carolyn.
You respond in the way you think is most appropriate.
That's been a big change. The Gazette used to have a reporter here every night for hearings. Yep, every night. But as we've seen, the Gazette gets slimmer and slimmer and reporters come and stuff.
Well, I think George has been doing a great job.
I agree.
Second, appreciate that.
If it's appropriate, I'll nominate George.
I'm checking that.
Okay, so who should I put that down? Krista or Alan?
Krista.
Okay.
Get your name in the news.
I've been in the news so much this week. Make sure you add who seconded, please.
Now, is there like a procedure for impeachment of...
I have to go to the Senate.
Yeah, it's definitely going to involve somebody getting up and talking for three days straight.
Okay. Okay, so now, I'm going to start on this end for the vote.
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. Yes.
Yes.
Well, you're abstaining?
I think so. I'm in favor of myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Reconsider if you won't.
Thank you, folks.
So, is the vice chair just the backup to this?
Basically.
Yeah.
And traditionally, I think it's a two-year limit. Is there a term limit? This comes up every two years?
I think we review it every year, but I don't think there's a term.
Okay, so, the vice chair is kind of being groomed for the, being the chair, perhaps? Or providing, I'm not sure what's the word.
In training?
Not that that should scare anybody from being a vice chair who doesn't want to go up to be...
Who doesn't want to be groomed.
Right, so if George isn't available, then, and hopefully the vice chair would be, then the vice chair would run the meetings. And, yeah, that's basically...
Are we allowed to nominate Sam in absentia?
I, I wouldn't recommend it.
Yeah. I don't think that would be very nice of us to do.
Who has the longevity here?
No. No. I'm going to ask, at least one to go.
Okay, Yuri.
I just can't, I just can't.
Yeah, okay.
You've been on for a while.
A while.
I bet you could run a good meeting.
Run from a good meeting.
Good meetings don't run from.
Why nominate Alan, honestly?
Can't tell if he wants somebody to second that.
I know. Are you just going to get a phone call in the morning?
I'll second the nomination. He can always decline.
I guess as long as you're doing everything.
The enthusiasm is overwhelming.
We're all so humble, okay.
Okay, so, I'll jump right into roll call requests so we can...
Yes.
I guess.
Okay.
Following George's precedent, yes.
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 Okay, great. All right, we're official now.
We had the same problem at CPC. It took us like an hour to get a, convince someone to be a vice chair.
Brian's been the chair for 10 years?
No, he was, he came in when I came in, four years ago. Yeah. He was on the committee, but I don't think he was...
Well, thanks for managing that so quickly. The first item, now with the more exciting stuff.
We could do the minutes first if you want.
Is there, folks hopefully got a chance to review the minutes that Carolyn sent to us? Is there, we have two sets of minutes, we'll take them one at a time?
They put a third one in.
Oh, third. Which, what date is that?
November 14th. And just so you know, for the, those who weren't on the, you're voting to accept the minutes in as the official record, so it doesn't, it's okay if you weren't at the meeting or you weren't even on the board then to accept them.
Do we do them all together?
Sure, unless you had any changes, there's nothing wrong with...
I'll move, we accept all three.
The minutes of 11:14, 12:13, and January 9th. Okay.
Second.
Any discussion yet? Well, good, all right, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Uninimised?
Great. And we don't have any INRs, just so you know. Okay, let me get this. Two families.
I'm dying to know why you've joined us tonight. Are you interested in two-family housing?
No. I'm just getting a lay of the land for a future meeting.
Great.
Where I will have something to say.
Okay, great, well, welcome.
She has somebody who prepares.
Admirable.
Okay, so, let me just pull up this document. Okay. Okay. So, I'm going to put this on the screen. So, I sent, so, we've had a consultant helping us through the summer and fall on developing design criteria to move forward with a zoning modification to allow two-family by right throughout the entire city, even in the districts that currently are single-family only, based on sort of built, or building on the, over two decades of experience of having accessory dwellings allowed by right in all of those districts. So, this would be sort of a little bit of a step beyond single-family with accessory dwelling because accessory dwellings have a restriction that they can't be larger than 900 square feet and an owner has to live in one of the units. And there's also some, some building orientation requirements that you can't have a door facing the street unless it was existing at the time and you're just sort of reusing space in an existing building. So, the idea is to allow a little more flexibility for people, folks in the city and think about maybe not having, sort of using that same platform of not requiring additional lot size for one more unit or one unit attached to a single family. And also create allowances for different configurations. So, it could be a two-family meeting under one roof or it could be two units on a parcel is still within, wrapped in that sort of definition of two-family. So, we've done some editing back and forth with the consultant about, about the draft, but we got to a point where I thought it made sense to check back in with the planning board, but in particular, sort of think about those design standards that sort of were having difficulty, coming to some conclusion about in terms of how rigorous we want to be on all four sides of any kind of addition and what really makes sense. And so, I wanted to have this check in with you all and also sort of talk about what you think makes sense. Are some of these things going too far and are they too burdensome? Because we also want to make sure that we're not creating so many regulatory steps that make it a burden and costly for people to do this. Because the idea is to allow a little bit more housing production essentially, or unit production in the city and to allow people options who are dwelling, you know, maintaining their own single-family home or they have, you know, family that they want to have live with them, but maybe they want more than 900 square feet. So, there's a whole host of reasons why we want to make sure we're not, on the one hand, saying, hey, we want to encourage two families and on the other hand, making it so onerous that you can't even really do it. So, yeah.
I have a question and then, other people might already know this, but when I read this compared to what's already in the zoning for like basically single-family, multi-family is a whole other thing, but is there a plan to redo the single-family in a sort of form-based code way also? Because they're so different. I mean, obviously, it's not approved or anything yet, but it just seems like wildly different.
Yeah. So, we, it's interesting, we've had this, we've, we've been having sort of this evolution of conversation about where we want to go with zoning. We've talked for a number of years about whether we should do a form-based code type of system throughout the city. And so, we started that conversation in the business districts because we already had some components, particularly in downtown North Hampton, where we have central business architecture review anyway, and there are, there are some elements of form-based code in that. So, we felt it was an easy step to take. We've been less certain about whether or not to then expand that to the residential districts or maybe just expand them to some residential districts, but not the entire city. And part of it comes to, part of it stems from the idea that the form-based code, the sort of typical form-based code is very prescriptive and, and has requirements for how you define which part of the city falls into what category. And, and I'm not sure any community necessarily can, you know, exactly mold itself to those established guidelines. But I think in North Hampton, it's particularly difficult because we have, we have some more dense urban neighborhoods and then more suburban characteristics, but not super rural. And so, we've been trying to introduce design elements into the zoning and then sort of test the waters, I think, for whether it makes sense to do form-based code for residential I think we've, particularly given that there's been concern with any new change in neighborhood... I think we've, particularly given that there's been concern with any new change in neighborhoods, I think we feel like design is important, is an important element to look at with new development, and that's, that some of the reactions in some neighborhoods have been related to design. Some of it's just change outright, but some of it's related to design. So I think we want to make sure that we are being sensitive to concerns in the neighborhood about changes and development, but at the same time, and, you know, foster that new housing development in the neighborhood. So I don't know if we would go, so I guess for single-family homes, that's sort of been the third rail throughout probably the country, but certainly in Massachusetts, about dictating how single-family homes look and feel and play. It's not such a difficult leap to do two, three, and multifamily, because single-family homes have, you know, since the fifties, have been sort of held up on this pedestal as, as the end-all solution for housing, so, and to be protected.
Carolyn, this is referred to as character-based zoning, I think. Is that just another way of referring to form-based?
Yeah.
Same thing?
Yeah. So I don't, I mean, my goal tonight wasn't to go through line by line and have you review it and say, yes, we're on track. I think I wanted to sort of talk more broadly about the concepts, and particularly about the design elements that were, that have been so far recommended. And it's not that we haven't had input to this. We pushed back, and we've sort of debated these issues already, but we got to a point where, you know, I wanted to highlight some examples of, of housing and structures in the community, and see how it matches up with this proposal, and see where we are. Whether you think as a board, this is the right way to go, whether you think that it's too far in some areas and not in others. So I don't know if you all have had a chance to look at this at all, or, you know, and how you want to proceed, but I definitely did not intend to go sort of line by line. And given that there are some folks anyway that might not be able to stay too long, I wanted to make sure we get as, you know, much of that sort of higher-level discussion. And what, the, the goal is to sort of get some feedback from you tonight, then go back and work with the consultants and sort of hash through some other things, and then give, you know, come back with a draft that I think we really do need to sort of roll up our sleeves and go through line by line.
One, one thought that I had, I quickly looked through it. I certainly didn't go line by line, but it struck me that there were a number of items where it was pure, a pure aesthetic judgment as to what was desirable and what was not. The only one that comes to mind is the relative width of windows to height. It couldn't be too wide relative to the height.
Second floor windows need to be...
Oh, right, yeah.
They need to be equal to the lower floor or less.
Well, also there's one about, it couldn't be more than twice as wide as it was high, I think, something. I don't know. It, there were a number of things of that sort that struck me as just purely kind of arbitrary...
Windows must be...
...aesthetic judgments, and I don't, there were other things about requiring there be front porches, you know, I can understand that, that has an impact on the neighbor, neighborhood, and the feel of the housing, but others, I thought if somebody wants to make really unusual dimensions on their windows, why not let them do it?
Yeah, I mean, I think sort of that's, this, their starting point, as you can probably see, is sort of looking at the context of existing neighborhoods that have been there for a long time, and then some newer structures that have fit in, that meet sort of the context of where they've been built, but, and use sort of successful neighborhood examples as the foundation for creating these standards. The board did have, and you, I don't know if you were on the board at the time when we were looking at, so we, currently we have some design requirements in urban residential A, B, and C about front porches, about orienting to the street. And at that time, there was a discussion about how much further into design the board felt comfortable with supporting and recommending in terms of a zoning change. And there was a lot of discussion about wanting to make sure that the ordinance is allowed for variation and new types of architectural styles, or modern architecture, even in neighborhoods that had some traditional qualities and historic qualities. Because many of the neighborhoods are sprinkled with various examples of structures that have been built at different time periods. And so there are very few neighborhoods that are completely, you know, out of, you know, one period in time, or one decade or two decades. And so there had been a conversation about wanting to allow that flexibility. So I think it makes sense to sort of check in, to see where, what you all think now. I mean, that's why I sent some of the photos to you, sort of think about that, and also a conversation about what seems to be sometimes sort of acceptable, it's not really, there might be, it's very simplified, building structures, but no one seems to be, no one seems to, you don't hear so much outcry about that, yet when you see something that's different and modern, that's what generates a lot of the conversation, even though there might be elements of that that actually draw from the neighborhood, whereas a simple, you know, plain box doesn't really do that so well. So I think it's just, I think it's important to sort of talk about what makes sense, and does it make sense just from the street perspective, or from, you know, three hundred sixty degrees around any kind of structure that's built, and what you think makes sense.
If you don't see the back, I think, the better location. It's more the front, it's more, unless you're on the street, you can see the other side.
Yeah, I think the...
I think it depended how, how much you can see of the house.
Well, is that from the perspective of the immediate neighbors who are seeing this addition, or is it from the community and the street? So I think the consultants certainly were trying to get at some of those difficult issues, when there's a change in the backyard, in someone's existing backyard, and you have an extension of a house. You know, traditionally, those, you know, farmhouse-style structures, you know, you'd had additions, and it would get longer and longer and longer in the back. And now, sometimes when that happens, they aren't necessarily the same architecture, or maybe the windows aren't, you know, are aligned differently. So I think they were trying to get at what kinds of impacts would you, would in a butter feel with that, and does it matter? Should, should we be looking at sort of that kind of ma, not only massing, but, you know, design?
Well, I tell you, and it goes so heavily.
And they have the barns, and people keep standing in three, four different times, and the barn together. It's kind of awkward, right? But I don't see something like this in Northampton, but...
Well, I mean, the other thing that's sort of interesting about Northampton neighborhood, especially the ones closer in the town, and like ours, the neighborhood where I live is, it's not, I mean, backyards, I mean, we're, we're very close in our backyards, too, so it isn't, it isn't, it is, it depends a lot, it varies, I think, from neighborhood to neighborhood. Like you stand in our backyard, and we, I mean, it could have a real impact, you know, all the, all the way around us, every, every single one of our butters, if they did something significant. And with their construction, because the backyards are really open, and they're close, and like, we don't have, at least our neighborhood, we don't have like the stockade privacy fences. I mean, I can go out my backyard and see down three, four houses down, and look to my right, and I can see the back end of David's house, and there's a house in between us, you know, so I do think that that, it does matter some, the, the, what's going on in the, in the back as well. I, the, the other thing about like the windows and the front, I mean, whether or not it's held to these necessary design standards, the, the other thing that, it seems to me that, that a requirement like that accomplishes is that, I mean, one of the ways to cut costs and make cheap housing that then you can rent is to, is to cut corners on things like lighting, like the house, windows, and, and it really, it, it, if we're trying to increase the level of good housing stock and rental stock, and, and lower income, we also, I think, need to be mindful that we don't create the possibility that people do things so cheaply. And so, you know, that they, that they're building accessory, you know, they're, they're building these, these, adding on multifamilies that, you know, don't have light, and don't have, they're bad, they're not good for the people living inside them.
Yeah.
Not just in terms of what they look like on the outside.
I, I disagree with that. I think the building code covers that. You can't make bedrooms without windows by, there's other documents that cover that, and I don't think, as far as I read this, and I didn't read anything about the sides or the back of the building in this, I thought it was all front facade, unless I missed something, but...
I think it was the stuff about the, the mass, the massing.
The massing, sure.
Yeah, right.
But, I mean, this seems to me to be purely about creating a front facade that has some kind of rhythm to, to fit with what I think an average, you know, nineteen fifty's Northampton I would see as like a nice Northampton house. I don't see it as anything about like the quality of life inside the house at all. That's it. I'm totally against this idea of like prescribing all these, as, as a, not speaking as a planning board member, as a user of, of zoning, I find this incredibly arduous to, to deal with. Because you're, I mean, is, I don't know if these are meant, I, I have a feeling these are meant more for developers who are buying book plans and trying to build something to get done, or, or homeowners, as an architect, to have to use this, and the building code, and deal with your client. I mean, this is a lot to deal with. I think it would have somewhat of a chilling effect for, just for two units. I mean, it's like a lot. That, that was my gut reaction. And that said, I mean, you can't have no, I mean, I, I understand the, the desire to have some regulation, but I, I kind of feel like the, the test should be like, what real-life problem in Northampton are these meant to, are we actually having a problem where people are building additions where the windows are thirty-three percent or some, I mean, I don't know. I haven't seen, I haven't noticed that. And I see a lot of houses around Northampton I think are weird and ugly, and, but it makes Northampton interesting. I don't know. It's, it's, it makes the house next to it look really good, you know, I don't know. And the fact is, the people who built that probably had some reason why they wanted to, and maybe, yeah, maybe it made the numbers work so they could put that extra unit in, and, so I don't know. The roof slope stuff, are people dying to mo, to build like two and twelve roofs or something? Like who's, where does this come from? I, I just, I've never seen roofs out there that, that I say, I need to leave the city because this roof is too shallow. I don't know.
Well, I mean, so, well, let's, so let's start with the, the roof. So there were a couple of examples that, well, there's one in here about sort of, that you don't see mostly roof. I think there's a, one example that some, they got some chatter around over off of Prospect Street where there's a large...
The yellow house?
The one by the Y.
Right.
Yeah.
That has, you know, solar panels on the roof, and, so that one facade, you can see, the roof is the primary element that you see coming from the last door.
It's still a great neighborhood, right? I mean, no one's left that street because of a weird-looking house. There's a couple weird-looking houses on that street.
Yeah. Well, so, I mean, that's the question. So you have that, and you have, and so there are some, as you saw in here, there are some restrictions that would say, no, you can't have a roof like that. So that's my question to you, you know, that I pitched to you. Well, what about solar, you know, if we're also trying to encourage, and this also, I think, would require that you're, again, you're solar-ready for a structure. So on the one hand, are we saying, you know, your roof can only be this much space, but we also want you to maximize the amount of solar gain that you have? And I think, but I do, I do think that the flip side of, of encouraging single families, or allowing for single families to have a second unit, is to make sure that there are some elements of design that are, that people can understand, that in their neighborhood, if, if something's going to change, they're at least going to have, you know, this one set of rules to, that they can be assured will be...
But since this is really meant to, this is only for two families.
Right.
So you could pass this, and then someone could still do a single-family home that looks like whatever they want, with whatever roof, right? And that doesn't change that.
Right, exactly. So that's the other side of the question. And then what happens when that single family that's been added on to, then they want to convert the interior space to a second unit, but that comes down the line.
Right.
So I think it's important to sort of think about that. So again, there are also proposed changes in here that would relate to pre-existing sort of non-conforming structures as it relates to adding a two-family. And my concern was sort of just that, that what if someone does a big addition, and then ten years down the road, they sell the house, and someone else says, oh, this is too much space for me, I want to add a second unit. Would that mean then they couldn't use that space because it wasn't built to the...
The standard.
The standards.
There are so many unique houses in Northampton, too, existing, that I've seen turned into two-families. Some of the stuff David was saying are kind of limiting. I don't know, I just feel like it's, kind of takes the creative element out of professionals that are designing for their clients, or a homeowner that wants to design their own stuff. So some of it I get, some of my, you know, the windows stood out to me because clearly that's what I do most of my life, is I sell windows. So some of the stuff I was like, eh, you know, why are we telling people what their windows have to look like? Because every building has a, could have a different shape, and every shape can accommodate a window that may look like horrible on my house, but would look fabulous on this house that you do. You know what I mean? And now all of a sudden you can't have it because it's twice as wide as it is high, or something like that, you know?
No, because my house came first. You cannot have, have followed me instead of my house. I mean... I, I, my first job as, as an architect was doing these types of form-based codes, and I, I think the value of them is huge in a really different context. Like we did them for big production, like Toll Brothers, big production developers who were building like ten thousand units in Phoenix, you know, and the idea is to bring the overall level of design up to a certain point, because really they want to have towns that look like Northampton. And I know there is a sense of which, like, we should make the laws today, allow us to build the town that exists today, like, like zoning and all those things have become more restrictive over time. So I'm totally in favor of pretty much with no changes, like some of the stuff about massing and breaking up the massing, I think is generally a good idea. But yeah, I think some of these prescriptive things about windows and roofs and stuff is maybe a little too much, just because I don't, I also don't see a lot of people out there wanting houses that don't prescribe to those things.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, a poorly-designed, new multifamily in, in a existing neighborhood that's, that will become sort of, it'll be a, a new addition to add to, a, a two-family. It seems, it seems to me, though, I mean, a poorly-designed house won't sell very well. I, you know, I mean, it doesn't mean it wouldn't, it doesn't mean it couldn't, but it's not like you're going to plop something terrible down.
Well, I remember the house on, we live on specific streets, or not, am I allowed to say anything about...
What's that?
Did I mention specific streets? I mean, we just did, right?
As long as the house isn't in the room, you can tell.
Right. Well, I mean, for instance...
Don't talk about me by my back.
Well, Woodland is like really traditional. When I moved here, I was like, oh, this is such, I lived kind of near there. I was like, oh, it's like a Hansel and Gretel street. It's so cute. And then next thing I know, Ben Cook took all these walls down and he put this like contemporary thing up. And at first I was like, oh my God, what happened to the Hansel and Gretel street? But now you drive by and you're like, that's awesome.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
It's a great house.
It's a great house. I mean, at first I think things can be shocking. I think people, people don't like change. We already know that. That happens almost every meeting that we're at. People don't like change, but. So somebody came up architecturally with that concept based on that street. And at first I think it was shocking to the neighborhoods and people who didn't even live in the neighborhoods that were driving by. But now I, I mean, and I work at RK, I get a lot of compliments. People will come in and say, you know that house near the park? And I'm like, yep. I like the siding on that house. What is, I mean.
Is.
I think those things happen.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's the other thing is this one, you know, you're talking about roof pitches that has a flat roof.
It has a flat roof.
Flat roof, yeah.
So, um, again, it's a single family, but you know, you could easily, that could have been a two-family. So, um, that's, um, I mean, this is, this is good.
Well, flat roofs are allowed in this.
What's that?
Flat roofs are allowed in this code. It says flat roofs are allowed. It says, it says you have to something called an articulated parapet.
Oh, right, right, right.
As an architect, I don't know what that is, but there needs to be a definitions, uh, chapter here because a lot of these words I've never heard of before.
For me, the biggest piece, I think that what I hear about is people are, some people are still opposed to this whole concept of infill. So it's not so much about what the finished house looks like. It's that so my neighbor can put another house on that lot across the street from me.
It's that it's being built at all. And that's not going to be solved by this.
Yeah. So I, I think that's going to be the biggest change myself is that we want to, we want to support that infill. And we want to, um, make these lots conform to a situation that we can add another house in there.
Yeah.
Cause I think basically what we hear often is that we're putting in another house. That means more people on my street. That means more cars. That means more parking. It's not so much, especially with a one, with a, a one-family house that's going to be added. We're not going to be really talking about the massing too much like in some other projects. So, you know, I wanted to circle back at sometime around the parking. For me, there's a couple of things in there that are a little confusing about parking the house on the side of the house, on the lot and the open space.
Yeah.
But the, the way the house looks though, which is addressed by these proposals will soften the blow to the neighbors. I mean, sure, there'll be more cars and people and whatever, but if it looks compatible or looks nice, the massing and the entrances, the porches, I think that part of it makes sense.
Yeah, true, true.
It's true. There'll still be the people and the whatever, but.
Yeah.
Does, does the current zoning make this designation between a porch and a portico? I found that confusing.
No.
Cause it says a porch has to be this big, but a portico could be this, but I didn't know you can just call it a portico and then it can be smaller.
No, I mean, that sort of, I think it's to your previous comment about uh, who the audience is and how complex it is. And certainly from, I think our initial perspectives, I would have to agree to that, um, I think creating a whole bunch of definitions for some things that are slightly, just slightly different, maybe doesn't, isn't necessary in Northampton. Right now, the language is covered front entry. And so we don't say it's a porch or a portico. We just say you need to have a covered front entry facing the street. So, um, so that's obviously another question. Do we want to further define and delineate the different types of those coverings and how big they can be and allocated to? Or, um, do you think it, it's more useful to be simpler and just sort of, um, and without those variations? And I think that goes, there's also some issues about the parking, which I think makes sense to go back to because we certainly have it. Um, traditionally there's been parking right up to side, side lot lines and things like that, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think that should be allowed. I don't know. I, I, I find all this stuff about these side yards is like insane. I mean, why can't I build on the side yard? I don't even understand that. As long as the water is not dripping on the, I mean, that, I don't understand why any city in the world has, to be honest, but.
You know, that little buffer area of the side setback where.
Yeah, it's crazy. I don't get it. But, I mean, um, just as a using, it's just a usability thing. Um, like this is a good example. There's a lot, in a typical diagram you see in a zoning code, it's like very simple shapes. Uh, and these are really cute drawings, but then like there's chimneys. Okay, but this doesn't address chimneys. So as it, as I've never seen this code before, I'm like, oh, something about a chimney in here, but there's not. But there are stuff about porches and the porches show up. So I would say these things need to be really stripped down and like only show the elements that are actually addressed in this code. Cause there's a lot, a lot of people are going to be seeing this code and there's things addressing elements that they're not used to seeing in zoning codes necessarily. So I think that just needs to, it's like some editing down of a lot of these diagrams.
Yeah.
This, this thing about the roof, this is like the, doesn't meet the standard. The only example I could think of is kind of like these, where I grew up in Maryland and like there's certain neighborhoods that are like just crafts, craftsmen neighborhoods. And craftsman houses are the only, like one-story craft, or one and a half story craftsmen, maybe even tape, like a salt box, um, taped house. I could be, I could see as the houses that might start approaching this crazy proportion. With, you know, if there's a little eyebrow dormer, you know, which you typically see in a craftsman. But that said, like people love those craftsman houses and you, uh, technically, yeah, you see a lot of roof, but they look great. I don't know. Like I couldn't imagine maybe except that one yellow house on Prospect, you know, what, what house, you know, what, what problem is this?
Okay.
So I don't know, but I don't know. I mean, you know, every, every situation that's.
I guess the other thing too about getting too prescriptive with the design stuff is. I mean, if, if the point is also to facilitate infill and that's what we're doing, I mean, it's infill. It's going to be so diffuse. It's not like it's going to make any meaningful. It, it's infill, you know, spread throughout already very diverse, you know, architecturally diverse and design diverse in terms of design neighborhoods all through the city. I mean, I, I mean, if somebody wants to go up, if somebody wants to have all the houses look the same, they can go move up to Villa Joe. Or they can, you know, a new development. I mean, and those are fine. That's cute. It's what it is. I mean, just coming from Houston where we have all those, you know, homeowners associations and you have all the cookie cutter, you know, neighborhoods. That's who, nobody wants that. I mean, that's, that's the context at which that this kind, that.
Right.
You know, you suggested, but I don't, it, it just, it also seems like it was, wouldn't even matter here because most of this is going to go into already existing neighborhoods that are kind of wacky and off the wall and.
Does this not apply to anything under cluster development, right? Things that are.
Right. It's really this so far is a sort of, um, you know, carve out just for a, a second unit on a.
Existing house that, that wants to make an.
Or if there's a lot that can accommodate.
Two-family, a two-unit, yeah.
Yeah.
What we're proposing, if somebody wants to add a second house on their lot with an existing one family, that it's a site plan approval every time they have to come here in front of the board.
Right.
Yeah.
Which we give food back anyway when people show, when they throw their plans up and you look and you go, ooh, do you think maybe you could do a little this and that? And we've had people.
But yeah, but we have done.
Free design advice.
We, we, we've massaged a couple of the plans where you're like, mm, can I just say that? If somebody comes.
And then they do and then the other one comes, no, what more?
Which, which probably an architect or a builder doesn't want to jump through those hoops.
The reality is, no, the reality is we know what those questions are going to be and you design it two steps back. So you know, okay, the planning board's going to ask for that. So we're designing to give it to them when they ask for it. You know, most architects that are developers have been through this before and it's the same questions you get at most of these.
The other piece too is to have enough, um, to allow some subset of these to be by right. So they don't have to come to the board. But right now we're still, we're looking at, I think detached as still requiring a planning board site plan. Right now detached accessory dwelling units go to the zoning board for special permit. So having it come to the planning board for site plan is a little bit less of a, um, threshold to meet than a special permit for the zoning board. But, um, we don't, we still don't see a lot of those, you know, in any given year.
Can you go up to the thing where it shows the different, you can have one on top of the other and the two next to each other? So. Uh, this was another diagram I thought was like overly complicated for like all these bumps in the house. It's like a very specific house that it's showing, you know?
Yeah. I don't, let me just see if I can.
Yeah, I think it's, you keep going.
Okay, so these, yeah. So front and back, side by side, one on top, yeah.
So this made me think like if I was a developer and I own, and, or developer suddenly, say I'm a homeowner building a house, I'm not a developer. I'm a good homeowner, not an evil developer. And I own, and I happen to have two lots. If you could build two houses next to each other, I would call a townhouse. You could build two townhouses next to each other, right? That's what this would be?
Mm-hmm.
On one lot.
Yeah.
But if I had two lots next to each other, I couldn't but build four townhouses in a row?
Like attached?
Four townhouses.
Good.
Could you do that? I couldn't understand from this code whether that was allowed or not.
So that, I mean, that's a, that's a good question.
Cause there's stuff about side yards.
So this is totally pulled out of context in that this is just for adding a second unit. And this would apply everywhere in the city, including in the more suburban neighborhoods, you know, Florence Road, Ryan Road. And further.
And beyond.
And beyond, and beyond. But we also have allowances for cluster. We have allowance for three, four family and more in the URC and URB district. So we do allow townhouses on, you know, four units attached in the URB district or the URC district.
So say you were just doing two.
Yeah.
But you're saying if you're adding, you're at, but say I buy a house and it's falling apart and it's to scrape. So I'm, I'm not going to scrape it, but I'm going to build a two-unit. I'll build this, this bottom diagram. That would be by right allowed, as it is now, or?
Or as this is counted.
So depending on the zoning, yes.
In URB, say.
Yeah, in URB, a two-family is allowed by right. Yes. Um, the only thing that would trigger planning board review is if the total new construction is over two thousand square feet. Then anywhere in the city, any new construction over two thousand square feet gets kicked to the planning board for site plan review. So if your two-family was twenty-five hundred square feet total, then you'd be coming to the planning board.
So every one. The use is allowed, right? But it still has to be dimensional on.
Exactly. Right.
Wait, so right now the use is allowed, however, why are they at planning board if it's, if it's twenty-five hundred square?
Every house is, every two, two families is going to be over twenty-five hundred every time.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, we're, we're trying to encourage smaller units. So there are, there may be a situation where you have, you know, smaller two units. But the reason is that, and this has been in the ordinance for a long time, is that, um, once you, so there's a considered intermediate project is two thousand square feet or more construction up to five thousand square feet. Anything over five thousand square feet of new floor area is a major project. So anything, you know, in that two thousand to five thousand square feet is coming to the planning board. The use for a two-family is allowed, but the board looks at access, landscaping, orientation, site layout. Some of which now will be defined potentially prescriptively in the zoning anyway. So it will limit the, the total items that this, that the board might be reviewing in a site plan for, um.
Cause it would follow this.
Right.
Zone base.
So it basically, I mean, think of it as, um, now in the zoning for, for, um, special permit, you have very specific criteria in the URB and URC district for more, building more than seven units. So there's this long list of, um, criteria that an applicant has to meet. The board still has to approve it, but everyone going into it knows that, you know, they have to hit all of those things. So this is in a way creating some of those same, um, requirements, but for two units. And if something came to the planning board, you would sort of look down and say, okay, you're meeting this one, this one, this one.
But the difference isn't really like, you're still following the same requirements. The difference is the public gets to come and comment on it.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Right. And it may be through this process, maybe in the B and C district, we say, even if you're two thousand square feet, well, once we do this form-based code for two-family, don't come to the planning board. I mean, it could be that too. We haven't really, we haven't, you know, thought about that.
This is so prescriptive, it's hard to imagine that if you're following all these rules, like what else is the planning board going to look at?
Exactly. So that's another thing that we want to, we want to evaluate because again, we're trying to encourage housing in town because we know we need new, new housing of all types. And so if we know we want it and we have the criteria, then why make a burden of someone coming to the planning board when you've got all the requirements listed in the code?
Certain reason why it couldn't just as easily apply to three-family? I mean, why stop at two?
Um, well, that's sort of the next step, actually. You're jumping the gun.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is really, I mean, the reason why we started this is because the goal is allow two families everywhere in the city where currently we'd only allow a single-family home, like in your neighborhood in Leeds. Only single-family homes are allowed unless someone's doing a four-acre cluster development. So in your neighborhood, using this, you could add a second unit to your property and it wouldn't be restricted or confined to an accessory dwelling size and have that ownership requirement that we have under an accessory dwelling. So that's why this doesn't say three and four family, because this is meant to cover the entire city.
There's another piece in here about usable open space. So I wonder if that's going to be kind of restricted too, because some of the in-town lots are so small.
Yeah.
That people won't be able to put a lot. Because even if they meet the size setbacks, they still aren't going to have this space that, um, allowable for passive or active activities.
Yeah.
It's a tiny bit of space. It's only a hundred and fifty square feet.
They should be able to meet that, given that we already have a minimum of open space anyway for lots. So in the urban residential C, we have a requirement of thirty percent of the parcel being open, which means it can't be driveway or building. So that, some of that thirty percent would go towards meeting that minimum sort of usable open space there.
Some of those numbers were kind of cut off in the one you sent us, I think. And I wasn't sure, is the idea is basically it's the same rules apply as previously? Is that, is that the general idea is that?
It's page five.
Like in URB, is that, whatever, forty percent?
At the top there, what are those column headings?
Is that URC and URB, thirty and forty?
Yeah, it's sort of confusing what that's all about.
Yeah, it must be C and B. Um, it got, it maybe didn't come down from the next page. Is that what happened?
And these seem to be the same percentages that are already in the.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not, there were no, to my recollection, we were not proposing to change those percentages from the existing conditions.
That seems to be the question though. Like if we want to allow more density, let's allow more density. I mean, the idea is now is you could do a huge single-family house. All we're saying now is you can cut that huge house and have two people live, two different families living in it. I guess it's a different number of cars, right?
Potentially.
Right, but I mean, in a sense.
So, um, we did modify the percentage of open space in two thousand thirteen, not in the URC. It's been thirty percent for years and years. In the B, it went from fifty percent to forty percent for that very reason. Um, and A as well. Um, so.
If you have a big house, say you have a five thousand square foot house shaped like a barn with no massing breaks or anything. And I want to chop, I want to interior renovate it into two-family. Is that what you're saying? Is like the sort of thing that was not figured out yet, like how that?
Right, so.
Cause you're not going to like go and create a niche to break up the massing in an existing barn-shaped house, right?
Did you sell my white rail house that I sent you?
Well, no, I mean, I can, um.
Do you have another one there?
No, that's, that's one of the ones.
The house over on Finn?
Yeah.
That's what, right in my backyard.
I thought that was a single, not a single family, right?
It looks like it's, I don't know.
It is.
The one that they're.
It's a single family, but the point is, I think it's eight thousand square feet. So it certainly could be, could accommodate more than.
Do you have any idea what that is? I mean, why?
Put about fifty people in there.
Is it really one family with an eight thousand?
Is that the new one that they're filling?
Yeah, that's on a.
Yeah, right on Finn Street.
Yeah. Um.
One that, one that's like right at the end of, what, State Street and, and...
Yeah. Take a left.
That's a single-family house?
Isn't that incredible?
Holy geez.
It's just got one electric meter.
Shoo way. That's a big house. Well, you know what, I lived on Union Street, they, they took that... There was a big house next to the old jail and they...
The big house?
Yeah, the, right, the big house. No, jail's never the big house. I know what's what from the big house. Anyway, it just made me think that that, that place was quite, and it was like that, that it was like that long and then it had the carriage house.
Oh, yeah.
And that's a single-family, too.
And that, that was a single-family, but they also had like a carriage house on the side.
Yeah. Right, so, you know, that's an example of, so that's sort of that other question, what if you happen to have this big, and so let's say in five years, they move and someone else buys that, but they can't, they want to take that 8,000 square feet and create more than a single-family.
As anybody in their right mind would want to do.
So how, you know, are these require, is it important to make sure that these requirements don't restrict that from happening? Because I think the other piece of this is sort of sprinkled throughout this and the policy of the city has been, through these zoning changes since 2007, has been, let's make it as flexible as possible for people because of changing circumstances. You know, if a structure can accommodate more than one unit, why not? If, you know, you can accommodate on, especially that location in town. So I want, I, so part of the question was, you know, A, does it make sense to you that, you know, we don't necessarily get into the nitty-gritty of conversions of existing structures? Because I think that would make it, it's another layer of, you know, complication and complexity. And is that sort of, is that counter to what we've been trying to do?
That goes, that's kind of where I wrote my initial question is, what's the thought to do with a single-family? Because if this is saying it's not about that there's two families, the problem is that there's masses that are too big.
Yeah.
Right? But that's not the criteria by which...
Right.
I don't know what the criteria has been previously, but...
There has been no criteria.
To me, I don't think that white house is too big, I mean, it's a big house, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's horrendous.
But it's such an arbitrary decision, like, it's such a subjective opinion.
It's, oh, no. Yes, most things are.
I mean, it's subjective, I mean, maybe once the, once the landscaping goes in, maybe it'll soften up.
Maybe it'll lift the scale.
Right now, it's just dirt and white.
Well, the problem is, it just dwarfs everything close to it. It's a monster on the, on the streetscape. Just like, has anyone seen the, on Gothic Street, we approved the...
Yeah.
It's three stories.
Yeah, yeah, it's horrendous.
I think, I think what we're wrestling with is that the whole point of this is to allow neighborhoods to change over time. And inevitably, something, this idea, oh, it doesn't fit with the neighborhood. The whole point is to allow neighborhoods to develop things that don't quite fit, because over time, those neighborhoods change. None of these houses in almost any neighborhood would be there if they only built things that fit with the little wood shacks that existed in 1650, I mean, you always build things that don't fit.
I don't think, I, I think there are, I mean, I'm certainly not in favor of enforcing particular restrictions on design elements, but to say that something should roughly fit into a neighborhood in terms of massing and scale and setback, let them design it any way they want, but give some validity or nod to the neighborhood context. I mean, like that white one, to me, looks like a monstrosity that was dropped on the neighborhood. And the same thing with Melnick Place on Gothic Street. It just dwarfs the adjacent structures.
I think there's an argument that could be made that it doesn't necessarily dwarf, neither of these dwarf the other structures. They're very similar heights. I think it's the, for the Finn Street, what is, you know, 87-foot-long massing, it's not, you know, articulated in the way that other structures in that neighborhood are articulated, but the heights are the same, basically. So I don't know that, I think you could argue that the, that that, there's not a dwarfing there. Same with Gothic Street, I think it's where it's presented on the site as opposed to a height that's out of character of other structures. So there probably are things that you could massage about those elements, but I, and I think they argue that in the, in the planning board meeting for, not this one, because it didn't come through, but the Gothic Street. You know, you reviewed the design and, and, and had some say in that.
The Finn, the Finn Street didn't come to the planning board?
No, because it's a single-family home, so...
Even, no size comes to planning board?
Right, because that's because single-family homes can do whatever they want in Massachusetts, basically.
And it's URC, right?
A few porticoes would help.
They don't, will have covered front entrances, because that's the requirement.
And the, the Gothic Street, I mean, it's already approved, obviously, but the fact that it's, the height is the same, I think it's deceptive, because a flat roof going up to that height occupies vastly greater mass and size than a peaked roof.
Yes.
The roof ends at the same point, but they present totally differently.
But Gothic Street is a great example, that's like right downtown. That's exactly where we should be growing density. We should have, the fact is, that's not too big, all the buildings around it are too small. That's what's creating the affordable housing problem.
The, the, it's...
I mean, if you compare, if you go two parcels away, you have that whole string of, I forget the address.
The office, the building.
Right, they're the same height and, and massing, they have a little bit, they have a different way of breaking up the massing.
Oh, hugely different presentation, though.
Yeah, I don't know, I feel like the Gothic, the one on Gothic Street, that, that, it's, it has the effect of ever so slightly expanding the footprint of downtown. And down, you know, the downtown aesthetic is taller, it's denser, it's, you know, so like, I think we'll get used to it.
But I think it probably does, like, immediately across the street, there are a couple of single-family homes, but I think that speaks to your comment that, you know, that's, that is downtown, so maybe the norm shouldn't be single-family homes, or won't be for the long term, as opposed to, you know, allowing the flexibility for them not to be single-family homes, I should say, as opposed to saying, you know, they shouldn't. So that allowing that sort of mix that close in is important.
Well, and the other thing, too, that, those single-family homes that are right in there and down that street on, is that increasingly what's happening is those houses are being bought up, like the Melnick's first house, and they're either mixed-use or they're using them as office space. The thing is that if it keeps going, you know, you're gonna see more businesspeople who are, you know, wanna be downtown, and they're gonna build new structures. They're gonna take, you know, they're gonna take those buildings down and, because a house doesn't work very well for the needs of many, you know, professional things. So I, I think, I think it's just gonna be part of a, of a appropriate, I think, a good, a desirable expansion of what constitutes the downtown.
The corner is floor is commercial, residential at the top. So it's a wedding there, I mean, I, I think, I look at the box, but they have to do all the finishing and I think to look like more neighborhood, but I think it was a good thing to do, really.
Okay, so what I think I'm hearing is simplification and particularly around specific elements like the roof and windows, window pattern.
Porticoes.
Right, porticoes. And not so much... We didn't quite get to parking, except there was some discussion about parking up to the side.
Can you explain what's meant by this parking? I was completely confused as to what it was trying to mandate.
Certainly restricting the total parking spaces right up to the side lot line, but also in front of the structure.
Though that part I understood, but it was later on where it was like the minimum parking requirements? It's kind of like one per unit up to 1,000 square feet?
Yeah, so that's our current standard, is one parking space per unit, per 1,000 square feet, up to a maximum of two per unit is what the standard is now, except for...
Well, it, you don't, it didn't really mean maximum, that confused me, too. Does that mean you couldn't have more parking?
No, it only has minimums.
It's the maximum required, so we, the city wouldn't require you to have more if you had a bigger structure, so I'm just trying to, I think it's at the very end.
Yeah.
Okay. So parking must be located to the side or rear of a dwelling. No more than one parking space can be located in front of the dwelling's front facade, so...
Location stuff makes, I think, a fair amount of sense. I was trying to imagine these houses with like six and eight parking spaces, it's like, I mean, it's sort of counterintuitive. The place where you really wanna add density is downtown, the general URC, B areas, A. I mean, some of these SR, other places where this is gonna apply, I can't imagine why you would be doing this, really. I guess you could build something more than 900 for your mother-in-law or something, I guess is the idea.
Yeah.
And those are the only zones I can imagine where people would have space to do six and eight parking spaces, I suppose.
Yeah. And then the other thing that's sort of new is even beyond the setback. So there's this whole issue about a build-two zone, so you have this area where the building would, would be allowed, you know, between the setback and sort of a maximum setback, almost. But parking shouldn't be in that area either, whether or not it was in the front setback. So right now, we only allow two vehicles in the front setback, but our setbacks are pretty small in the in-town districts, 10, 10 feet for front setback. So you can really only fit, you can't even really fit one car in that front setback anyway, if, if the structures hold that parking.
And the reason behind this, again, is really around aesthetics, that the front yard just doesn't look like a parking lot.
Right.
There's really some lawn there, there's some...
Right, and there's transition space, you know, between sidewalk and the front portico porch, covered entry. And that, that's really sort of, that's a living space, it's not a parking space.
These should be the rules for King Street. No, but if you keep going down, just to where the numbers part, there's a little chart, I think, at the end? Yeah, this part.
Okay.
So you're saying this means one per 1,000 square feet up to one per unit?
Up to a maximum, I think that's supposed to be a maximum of one per unit required. So if you had...
So it's one unit required, it's one space, it's one per unit required?
Yes, that would be a simpler way of saying.
Okay, I just, I couldn't tell if I was meaning something else or not. But I think later on, when you have URA, it's a little different.
Right. And I think that could be simplified, for sure. I think that was to mirror sort of how it is now, we say up to a maximum of two per unit. We never require more than two per unit. And so this is saying, well, let's drop that down, because, you know, we're competing for two things when we still have two cars per unit in a downtown area, right? We want units, but then sometimes parking gets in the way.
Is there any further discussion about not requiring parking in downtown?
We don't require parking in the central business district for new units, but we haven't reached that, we haven't had that discussion for the residential districts. So that makes sense to simplify that. Is there anything else that, that you wanna make sure that gets addressed at this stage? I mean, again, this isn't, you know, this is the first draft that you've seen, so it's not gonna, it will come back to you, but I really just sort of wanted to gauge where you guys were with this, you know, touch base and then be able to sort of continue to work. We wanna move this along now, sort of then, we've had a lot of other projects going on and this hasn't really...
So these diagrams, that I think you mentioned earlier, which, which are really helpful in understanding the setbacks or not, but I'm not quite sure if the, I'm not sure what these layouts are, if these are buildings, the second building on here, the shadowed areas?
Yeah.
So I think there may be, I like that there's a consistency, we're using the same diagram throughout this, but I'm not sure that that's the right diagram of houses. A very weird kind of setup.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll definitely go through...
They're all like page five. It's this foot, where it talks about the lots, really, and the lot standards. It's the same diagram used throughout, so...
I'd also, just from a usability point of view, not, not specific comment, but as long as you're having a consultant write this, like have the consultant write it so it fits very seamlessly with how the existing zoning is written, because I find that very confusing when you're like, that pushes you over to this chapter and it's like, the whole structure's totally different. Like URA, URB, URC should always be in the same order, because I think they flip it, like, the higher-density ones first. But if I'm reading the zoning, I'm like, oh, I forgot which was C and which was A, and it's just that sort of consistency throughout, because we in this room know it's a document that's being written now, but someone coming in later is not, it's, it's all one big, a couple hundred pages to read all at once.
Okay.
I love the addition of just the, the house photos, you know? I think that adds, it helps a fellow like me understand what we're talking about.
Okay, all right, well, this is very helpful, so I appreciate it and to be continued, for sure.
I think that, you know, do we open?
It wasn't a public hearing, so it was really a mess for...
What is the process on this thing? I mean, it's been going on for a while, this conversation about the form-based zoning. But at some point, does it go to the city council, does the...
Yeah, so it would be a code change, so any amendment goes officially is adopted by city council, but that process requires official public hearing to be held by the planning board, official public hearing to be held by city council. Potentially, in this case, we might do a joint public hearing with city council committee, just to make sure everybody sort of, sometimes it's helpful for councillors to hear a planning board member's comments and vice versa, so we might try to do that jointly, but at any way, at any rate, both those committees need to hold a public hearing, it could be joint, and then as a recommendation, goes back to full council, and then council determines whether or not to adopt.
Certainly, all the architects and building contractors in the town, probably, they have a way of weighing in on this or hearing about these changes coming up. I wonder if they're, the only place where they can really weigh in is at those public hearings?
Well, so as part of this, actually, the consultants did have a sort of focus group with architects and designers to bounce some of these ideas off and get feedback. So that, that was with the intention, obviously, of understanding what the development community, building community feels about these changes, so that was, that was one element.
There were the, there were the public, the big group sessions, like in Florence and downtown, by Dodson and Finkler, but that was more about the city sidewalk design.
That was about form-based code for Florence Center and downtown. And then Dodson Finkler's doing this piece just for the two-family, so, right, we haven't done, we'll need to do more outreach once we, you know, hone this down a little bit.
The, the golf course thing that we looked at? Would those be, in five years, some, could those people build second units on those lots?
Yeah.
It's only cluster developments which would be allowed?
Well, it sort of depends, it depends on the nature of the permit, or it might require an amendment to a permit. So it doesn't mean that they would be not necessarily allowed at all, it would, might just mean a different permit path to, to get new units. But this is, I mean, a cluster development, if it comes in as a cluster, it means... But this is, I mean, a cluster development, if it comes in as a cluster, it means a development of maybe multiple lots, maybe multiple units on those lots. If we make two-family by right in every district, then each of those individual lots that are approved under a cluster could have a second unit. So it could be...
Okay, that, that was my question.
Yeah.
Okay. So it does apply to them?
Right. So I was thinking more of, we have a separate permit process for a cluster. Yeah. It, it would, essentially, this would allow that, because we'd...
But once the clusters are approved, those are just regular lots after...
Exactly. So if they're on their own lots. So it's just like accessory dwelling units now. If you have a single-family home, you're allowed anywhere to do an accessory dwelling on your single-family home. So this would replace that.
I think it's great. I mean, thinking of all places like Village Hill, which, like, we went through 10 or 15, I remember many years, getting to this point. But it's great is because it allows it to give the opportunity to change over time and not just be stuck in whatever you thought in 2005 or 10 forever.
Except for those pesky owners' association agreements.
Oh, they have their...
I feel like we're gonna come back in 50 years and Village Hill's gonna look like Village Hill, which is fine. It's charming.
All right. Is there motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yes.
First?
Second.
Great, okay. Thank you. Carolyn, anything big coming up in our next meeting, which will be done?